Okay, good evening. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission and this is October 24th of 2024. Welcome everyone to our meeting. Let's start with Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of all which stands under our indivisible authority and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agendas first up.
I move that we approve the agenda. Second.
Okay, we do need to add one item and that was one of the handouts I gave you, the local hazard mitigation plan.
Yep, so discussion of the local hazard mitigation plan?
Yeah.
Talking version?
Yeah. Any other changes to the agenda? Sherman, you okay with adding that?
I'm fine with addition.
Should that be our first topic under the new business? Or, that is new business, right?
Yeah, let's put under new business.
After the, um, yeah.
Yeah, Goodriches. Yeah, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Public comment? I don't see any, uh, don't see any public in the room or on Zoom. Um, so we're down to new business and we're down to Scott and Nancy Goodrich's subdivision. So, um, you did hand out a brief description of your plans there. Did everybody see that paragraph?
Yes.
Do you mind paraphrasing that?
Not at all. So, purchased this property about four years ago and have been living in the house that's there now. And, um, in our anticipation of retirement, we would like to, um, make this little subdivision and build a very small, energy efficient one bedroom house for our retirement.
So, so the new lot would be for you and you would sell the other lot?
Yeah.
Small shaped, okay, okay.
Potentially.
Yeah.
So, um, pretty straightforward.
Really.
We've got forms. You've seen some of them already, I think. Um, so with the, um, copies that we have of the survey, of, under Form 1, we've got boundaries and area of contiguous property of owner. So that's a yes, everybody? Boundaries and area of property subdivided. Proposed subdivision lines. Name and address of professional preparer. I'm just gonna keep putting yeses in till you tell me otherwise. Numerical and graphic scale of plan date in North Arrow. Existing features and facilities including roads, public utilities and utility easements, wooded areas, structures, water courses, ledge, wet areas, excessively steep slopes.
I don't see water courses or ledges, but I don't know if that's necessary. What do we do away from?
Would either of those be applicable?
There's nothing on wooded areas either, is there?
No.
Is there any, is there wooded areas around the, nothing?
Well, the lot itself has some free time.
Lot has few trees on it.
Okay, that's all, I was just wondering.
It's not woodlands, no.
No, okay.
Proposed improvements including roads, utility and utility easements and rights of way of structure. Um, so the, the rights of way are, um, you, you have a proposed driveway onto Post Road here.
Do you have a curb cut for that from the town? Did you get?
Um, we've submitted an application, but I haven't heard back yet.
Yeah, I think Bill said, yeah, that's in process. Okay, and location map, which is usually the smaller inset map, okay.
It's a bit of an odd shaped, um, parcel to begin, but that you're, yeah.
It almost seems as if, I, I think that actually, um, the entire piece was owned by one person.
And then two of the lots were cut out.
Yeah.
Yeah. And they retained this access to Post Road for the previous owners. I assume for maybe doing this one day.
Okay.
We also submitted an application for Town Water, um, which runs by there, but, um, Bill had said that he had to check with the engineer from Rutland City to see whether or not there's capacity.
Okay.
And we haven't heard back on that either.
Okay. Okay, we've got Bill's online now. Hi, Bill. Hi, Mary. Hi, Norman.
I'll, I just let them in. Um, the, yeah, Dave, Dave has the driveway permit. I have the water.
So now we do the fun, uh, Form number two, uh, which has 25 items that I think you've been through with Bill. If it's okay with everyone else, I think I'll just go down to the waivers here. Um, number seven, you're asking to waive the identification of the zoning districts applicable to the area to be subdivided. We have no zoning.
Yep. Yes.
There's a no on number nine, streets, highways, easement sidewalks and alleys, including names and widths insisting and proposed.
There aren't any, there's a, they're building a sidewalk right now, but it's on the opposite side of the road.
On Coast Road you're talking about?
Right, yeah.
We okay with a no for that?
So, um, no, it's not present or they're requesting a waiver?
No, it's not present is how it's done here.
I don't have the form in front of me, so I'm a little, um.
I think they completed that sidewalk.
On the other side.
Yeah, on the other side.
Right.
Cause it goes all the way down to the school now.
Right.
Yeah, there's no sidewalk on, on the south side of Post Road.
But that's, but that wouldn't be.
That's not applicable.
Right.
Right, not, not required for this lot. Um, okay, so this.
Is the, my, I'm questioning whether the form is asking whether that is present and they're in compliance or whether there's, uh, there's a waiver needed because it's not applicable. That's all I'm asking.
Drawing, okay, so this is drawing requirements shall conform to all specification as directed by this statute, 27 VSA 1403.
Right, that I understand. So, my question is, are any of those items listed actually present? Because, I mean, um, there's no point in putting something on that doesn't exist, so if, if there is an option for waiver there, then that should be what, because I thought that's probably who started the conversation Barbara, that we were going down to the waivers.
Yeah, I didn't, didn't notice all these no's.
It shouldn't be a no, that's my point. I think it shouldn't be a no, it should be a waiver. There should be a question of a waiver because it's not applicable. No means that it's not present and it exists. The waiver is that there's no reason to, uh, include that as an item for your plan because it doesn't exist. So you're asking for a waiver for that because there's nothing to apply. At least, that's my interpretation.
Sorry?
To, to, to check waiver as opposed to?
What you said.
Okay.
So that's, we've got a similar situation with 11, 12 and 13.
That often happens.
Water courses, municipal and public utility easements and sewer main connection. So, so, um, let's look at these a little more closely. Water course is probably a waiver.
Because there's nothing there. Right, there is no water course on that.
What about the utilities and, and the water, the sewer and water that they're requesting?
Sewer, not, not sewer because sewer doesn't go that far.
Okay.
So there is no sewer there.
That's how water does come along.
Yeah. So we can probably do a waiver for 11, but I'm wondering if we want to keep no for easements in water, public water.
Right, because if it's a no, they have to address it before the final hearing, correct? And so Bill would know whether that's going to be possible. If that is going to be possible, they'll have to include it on, on the block, right?
If what's gonna be possible?
Uh, water access to the city water.
That's actually number 14.
Is it the one?
Um, that's right. 13 is just sewer and 14 is the water main.
Sewer is not applicable because they don't have access to that.
So we want a waiver on 13.
Right.
And no on 12, just going backwards, and a waiver on 11.
Yep.
That, I don't know if this is how we usually do this, but it makes sense tonight. Um, and you've said yes to the water mains.
We, it is included on the map.
Yeah, that's right.
Just that it's there, but it, we still haven't heard whether or not it's possible for us to connect to it.
Okay, so I think it should just not be a, it should not be a waiver, but there's no issues with it because it is shown.
So they have a yes for that one?
Right, so that's fine. Okay, sorry. Right, if they, a, a, as soon as Bill gets confirmation that they will receive water.
Right, right.
It's not an issue at all. Otherwise they have to do a well and put a, put that on, on the map. So I mean, there's, there's a potential, uh, once Bill gets his answer, there's a potential for it to be confirmed or they have to go a different route and they have to show the well on the, on the list.
Okay, let's keep moving here. Um, number 15, um, there's a no for drainage, drainage systems and connections to municipal and community systems.
Um, are there no community, there are no community municipal systems, so that's a waiver, right? Sure.
That's what I would think.
Uh, no for number 16, parks and other open spaces, yeah.
Nothing there.
17 other essential features. Existing and proposed. I think we usually put a waiver for that too.
I mean, unless there's something that, uh, whether those are physical features or whether those are, um, manmade features. It would be a waiver if there's nothing there.
A waiver, a waiver is requested for number 18, the, the trees.
Barbara, can you guys hear me?
Fine. Um, a waiver is requested for number 20, contour line base, contour lines based on accurate ground surveys or combination ground aerial surveys.
Really just a flat piece of land. Um, they'll have the contours when they do the sewer system, I think, on that map, which needs to be state approved, but we didn't have it included on this survey.
That's a common waiver, I mean, especially when it's fairly flat, right?
I don't know what we gain by having the contour maps on, for, for this level of detail.
Yeah, I agree.
And, uh, a few more no's here. 21, typical cross sections and profile of the proposed grading streets, highways and sidewalks.
That should be a waiver, I think.
Okay. Um, 22, if a.
Sorry? I just got a text from Bill, wanna know if we could hear him.
We can't hear him.
We're not hearing him. Okay, I'll tell him no.
Norm, do you wanna speak? Just, just say something?
But I don't have anything.
He thinks the master volume is turned down.
I don't have it in front of me. Can you hear me?
Uh, using the remote maybe?
I can hear, I can hear you.
It's in the black cabinet, the bug knob on the right. Turn it up to half. He said, black cabinet.
Yep.
Bug knob on the right. Turn it up to half.
It's a button knob. There was a knobs. Input man, oh, I'm gonna go with this one. This is volume. And have somebody talk.
Keep talking, Norm.
Hey, Norm? Yes?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
He said, bu, black, bug knob, knob on the right.
Yep. I've got the volume knob and it's now up at three quarters and it's not working. There's an input knob.
He says a big knob, a big knob.
Big knob.
Big knob.
Alrighty.
Norm would.
I wonder what a button knob is.
Yeah, I know, we all were. Norm, can you say something?
Yes, can you hear me?
Oh.
Oh, yes. The button knob. How about Bill?
I, I assume that's the last thing you wanna hear from me tonight.
I was typing too fast. I meant big knob.
Bye bye. Bye bye. Uh, Bill, can you hear us now? And can we hear you?
Yes, I can. I was typing too fast. It most, supposed to say big knob. Um.
Yeah. Sorry.
I couldn't translate that well enough, I might have.
Yeah, Matt, my volume gets it every time. Uh, so Dave does have the driveway permit. I have the water permit. We just, we're, we're, we should be all set. The, it wasn't the city engineer, it's our town engineer. Um, we, we're, we are very confident. We have the, we have the supply. We, we just were waiting for this process before we did anything else because it wouldn't make sense to move forward. Uh, but both of those should be all set.
Because it's indicated on the, uh, map, Bill, but the question was, I think we, uh, we put the check mark on yes because it was shown on the map, so we didn't have to request a waiver for that. It was just a question of whether they were going to be going with city water or their own water system, so it seems like.
It will be municipal water, but those are, it's not a water easement because the water lines are in the right of way. So it's not actually a water easement. It's not like we don't have a water line running through the property.
Right.
Right. Okay. Um, 22 is a no. If a private sewage disposal is required, it shall comply with 10 VSA 1973.
But it's not required, so that's a waiver.
23, preliminary designs of any bridges or culverts, culverts which may be required.
That should also probably be a waiver.
Yeah.
Cause there aren't any, or there don't seem to be any.
Um, and there's a no for number 24, all parcels of land proposed to be dedicated to public use in a condition of such dedication.
Once again, that's a waiver because it doesn't apply.
Right. So, um, we're almost through this. Um, yeah, we've already asked those questions, so I'll just fill that in. So, um, we meet every three weeks. And so the next meeting would be, um,
14.
November 14th. That's convenient for you folks to come back. We have to hold a public hearing on this. And with anybody who wants to speak about it, um, do so.
What will be on the 14th?
Mm-hmm.
If that works for you. Uh, we could do it three weeks after that.
That would be in December.
Do you both have to come or?
Um, just one of you could come.
Having, um, knee replacement surgery on the 11th, so he probably wouldn't be able to come, but.
We'll see.
I'm happy to help.
We could push into the December if you want.
And can he, he could actually access it online?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Gonna turn their volume on.
Yes.
Can they both access it online?
Um, someone has to be in, here in person, yeah. Yeah, okay. Sometimes there's comments, sometimes there isn't. Um, but we have to do that legally and, um, you know, it's a formality and, um, we should be able to, we'll, we'll make some sort of decision that night, most likely. And then there's 90 days to get the, the Mylar to us. And, yeah, and I think you, it looks like you've paid all of the, the fees. So, does anyone else have any other questions?
Do we need a motion to, to warn this for a hearing or, okay. So, um, I will make a motion to warn the, um, uh, Goodrich subdivision for a hearing on, uh, November 14th.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
And we'll do that right at the top of the meeting.
And that's also at 6:30.
Yep. Great. Any other, any questions for us?
Good news that the municipal water is available. And will we hear from Bill about the, um, driveway permit?
Yep. No's. Right, Bill?
Yes, uh, Dave and the crew have been dealing with some sinkholes, so he has not a chance to stop, but he will take a look at it, but did not have any initial concerns.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Good luck with the surgery.
Yes, thank you.
Did we actually take a vote on that?
No.
Okay.
I don't, I'm not even sure we had a.
We had a second.
Did we have a second?
Howard seconded my motion, so call a question.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Another formality. Thank you.
Good night.
Barbara, just, Barbara?
Yeah, Norm?
Is Mary Beth active tonight? Is she? Or am I voting? Or am I the?
Although.
Mary Beth is online. No, that's a.
Right, then I'm, then I'm an alter. Thank you.
Okay, um, so now we're down to what we added to the agenda, which is, um, the new local hazard mitigation plan for, that's this thing, um, for the town. And Bill has been on that committee and, uh, has been through the process of putting this together. And I'm going to kick it over to you, Bill.
Absolutely. So, uh, Dave, the role commissioner, uh, Marty Wasserman, our emergency management director, uh, me as the emergency management coordinator, and, um, Stephanie from the Regional Planning Commission have been working to update our plan. Uh, and we have basically got it in a full draft form at this point. Uh, we are now in a public comment period for the next, uh, next couple of weeks. So, there's a poster on the, there's a sign in the hallway, if anybody has comments, but this is updating, uh, any special hazards, special areas of concern, uh, for flooding, for fire, for, you know, uh, variety of, variety of different things. Uh, we identified, uh, the, the top hazards in town, uh, like, you know, if there, if there's a wind event, if there's a, a snow event. Uh, we had, we discussed all those things. So, our plan, uh, right now is, uh, to accept public comment, uh, up and through the next select board meeting, uh, that, which will be November, Monday, November 4th. Uh, that meeting will close the public comment period and then we can finalize the plan from there. Uh, but we are moving very quickly because our existing plan had expired, so our federal reimbursement rate is, is much lower than we wouldn't like it to be. So we are trying to get this, uh, done. Uh, so if anybody has comments, um, please feel free to, to look at the, look it up and let myself know or Stephanie know.
Uh, Bill, any surprises in here from, I mean, the, the whole layout looks different than, than previous plans, um, but any of the suggestions or locations that you selected are, have any of them really changed?
Not, not really. The, there's some levels of detail that FEMA requires now they didn't require before, which is why it looks different is because we had to include all these new things. Uh, we, we, we had our whole ranking, uh, rubric for uh, different topics and how they, uh, whether they, you know, population or financial, uh, rankings, um, which we spent several meetings doing that. So, this is, uh, it's, it's, we took the last plan, updated it, and, and Stephanie's made sure it meets, uh, the federal requirements. Um, and a lot of this work is being done, which is, is being done, uh, through grant funding. Uh, and all the time that Marty, myself and Dave spend is our in-kind match for the grant, so that's very helpful. Uh, but no big surprises. Um, we have made some adjustments along the way, but just to reflect kind of what's we're doing. Uh, there was a lot of discussion about flooding and, um, Stephanie had some very good maps that had identified all the buildings in town that are in the floodplain. Um, and I do have some of those, uh, available, uh, but nothing, nothing that really jumped out and surprised us, but just updating a lot of, of the plans and locations.
Is there anything the planning commission would be needed to, would need to look at if this was adopted?
Not, not really. I mean, this is, you know, this is to help us, I, prevent hazard damage down the road. So, uh, one of the, you know, we identified, uh, infrastructures in the floodway, so one of the things that came up was, uh, the fire district sewage pump along Route 3. So identifying that, you know, could potentially help get some funding to mitigate losses in the future, but that's a different, that's a different discussion after the plan is adopted, if, if they accept that. So, it's those kind of things that we're looking at. Um, but we, you know, we, we really looked at this as, uh, what were some of the major things that impact our town. Flooding was, was a problem, but it didn't really cause, you know, widespread issues. Our big, our big issues were snow events and wind events that had the greatest impact on, uh, the town as a whole.
Are there, are there sections or pages, Bill, that, uh, uh, the planning commission should, uh, look over just to see if there are any, uh, questions or any feedback that, uh, should be given because at the meeting the other night, uh, Mary Ashcroft, uh, did charge me, since I was a member of the planning commission present, with having the, um, planning commission take a look at it, uh, and give it a, a bit of a review, which I said might be, uh, a challenge given that we have one meeting, which is tonight.
Sure.
Uh, before the, um, before the select board meeting on the floor.
Agreed. So, I, I think the best thing would be to, if, you know, for, it, it's probably not gonna be able to do it really tonight cause it's, it is, it's a lot to go through. Uh, but I would, I would suggest, so on our website, on our Facebook page and posted in Town Hall, are, are all locations where you can find the information on how to review the plan. Um, and just go through, you know, if, if people wanna go through it, which is, would be wonderful, and just, you know, if, if you don't see anything, that's great. And if, but if you see something like, hey, this is, this is an area of concern that, you know, I, I have, see if we've addressed it or, or not, and then we can, we can take that up as part of the public comments. Um, but yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's kind of too much to go through, uh, in a, in a meeting like this. But if, um, if people wanna, can individually do that, that would be great, and it'll probably take you, I don't know, 20 minutes to go through, if you go through the plan and just kind of look at some of the highlights and see if there's anything that jumps out at you.
And those, those highlights are identified on the website?
Yeah, they're, they're, the whole, the whole plan is there. So the website that they have, um, gives you a link to the whole plan. And just, just going through it and seeing if, what, you know, if, 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 if anybody sees any glaring mistakes.
Okay, cause I think we have a copy of the whole plan sitting in front of us, each of us.
Oh, perfect. Yep. So, if you want, that's, that's even easier. So if you wanna go through that and, uh, you know, I, I, over the next couple of weeks, we have until November 4th. So the board, the board, the November 4th board meeting is the, is when we close the comments.
Okay, yep.
So how will that work? Do you want, um, we don't meet before then? Or?
I, 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 I do have a suggestion, but, uh, it, it may take a little bit of logistics here.
Um, I, I think for, you know, this is, this is a, this is, can all be considered public comment, so I, I don't think there needs to be an official planning commission statement, um, cause there really isn't time to do that. Yeah, so, 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 it, but, so anybody wants to send suggestions in, they can send them to me or send them to Stephanie, either is fine. And it'll just, it'll be added to the public comment list.
Okay. Um, trying to remember about the survey, uh, that went into this. When was that done and how many responses did we get?
They did get a few. I think it was like eight or 10, maybe? I mean, you know, not overwhelming, but we got feedback. Um, Marty did some public outreach at a transfer station and got a ton of feedback, which was great. So, we, we have had public engagement so far, uh, but the survey results are referenced, uh, in there. And there's some addendums that need to be included that'll go in the final draft. Um, so it was, there's still a bit of things being, being populated, but that's, that's part of it.
Yeah, I was there when Marty was, was, had his board up. He was getting a ton of comments. So those were incorporated in this as well as the survey.
Yes, they are.
Okay, any other questions for Bill on this? So all comments to probably Bill would be easiest.
Yep.
Before, before 6:00 PM on November, November 4th.
Stephanie said that the, the key pages were pages three through, I think, 21, which is the, the, well, is that 19? I guess it's 19. Then you have public engagement on A3. There are two pages of that. So I guess that's 21 that she was talking about. So you can start on page three, because the rest is just table of contents and cover page, and go through page A, A3, or pages A3. And those are the areas to look at. What I would suggest, if it's okay, Madam Chair, there are eight of us currently present during the meeting. I would suggest that each, that we assign two pages per person to see if we have any comments, because that way we don't have to spend, any one of us doesn't have to spend the time doing 20, 21 pages. We can focus on the pages that we select. And then people could offer any comments and say, no, it looks good.
That's an idea. I'm wondering if it will take anything out of context. Just looking at a few pages. What, what, Norm?
I'm just not available to do that. I'm out of town the whole time.
Well, it's an online document, Norm. The link.
I'm sorry?
The whole document's online. There's a link on the website.
I will try to, well, I will try. I'm just in a difficult situation.
We understand.
I'm taking, I'm taking care of somebody that's not well during that time, so.
Well, there are seven of us, so we could each take three pages as opposed to two.
And we can also work around taking things out of context, not, not start in the middle of any, any subject.
Right.
Not stop in the middle of any subject.
I, I think the intellect of the group will be able to handle the, the document. I think, I think we'll be okay.
Boy, thank you, Bill. That's really good.
Actually, the, the way this is numbered, I thought she said started on page three, but these are numbered differently. So it actually starts on page one, and it goes through page 21. So the 21 pages goes through double A3.
If it was a larger document, what you suggest Dana would make perfect sense, but I think this is small enough that whoever has the time and inclination can, can read the whole thing.
Okay.
By the fore.
That will not be me.
Okay, Bill, don't go anywhere.
Has there been a summary of the pages? Are we going to do that?
No, Barbara said anybody who is so inclined may read through the entire document, not for comments.
Okay, thank you.
It's not that long. Okay, down to old business and the subdivision ordinance, remember that? And the comments we got back from the town attorney. Bill, you've, you've put in some of those, and there's some that you think that we should spend a meeting looking at.
Yeah. So there were, there were a lot of his suggestions that were, instead of this, use this. And I went through and made all of those changes. And it should be in the document I sent out to everybody with the meat documents. It would, it'd have been the ordinance with the Kevin Brown edits, or KB edits. And then there's two sections in particular. It was part of section two and part of section four, that he had extensive comments and did not give specific language because of the extent of the changes that he was discussing. So part of it was in the process and the acceptance. And in some cases, it was moving entire sections from one part to another. So there's a lot, and.
Go ahead.
It's, it's, I think, you know, we, we may need to have maybe a, 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 a ad hoc group that takes that on, because that, I, I could see that being a couple hours to try and get through that. So I don't think we're close to having a new document. I think we're at this point, we can input the changes that he suggested, which are in there. But as far as their sections, and then he also talked about designated administrative officer for this, which we don't specifically have. I've been kind of acting as, as he, as he said, but we don't have one specifically. But I can see this conversation being a couple hours to try and come up with the changes he's talking about. And then we need to send it back to him to make sure we did it the right way.
Right. So Bill, let me ask a question. I, I had a very brief amount of time to be able to do a cursory review. And if memory serves me correctly, pages 18 and 20 had highlights. Is, is that the, are those the areas that you were referencing in terms of major changes? I did not note what sections those were in.
Yeah, I'm trying to look at my copies right now, and, and there was, there was just, there was so much, like it was. I think so. Is that, is that utilities?
I'm, I'm trying to pull that up again, because I did not print that. It was too long. I didn't want to.
Yeah, it was, it was a lot.
So I'm looking for that now, subdivisions.
Yeah.
Let's see.
Oh, you got it? Yeah. The only problem with this is, is it doesn't, I don't, oh, 11, 12, 18 and 20. I'll tell you in a second. Thank you, Andy. Yes. Well, requirements for design standards, planning standards, that's on page 18. And then I, I was assuming that was that whole section 4.01, but I didn't want to make a faulty assumption. And then the other one, and maybe it was the whole section that went.
4.01 was a big, was a big change.
And 4.04 was the second one on page 21.
Yeah, there was a lot in section four, and then a lot in section two. And it just got to be the point, to the point where I just couldn't. I, well, for, I didn't have time to really decipher it, but he, he, he didn't. So his procedural process of subdivision approval basically was we have to start kind of, kind of do a wholesale approach to it. And then section four, part of section three, like this, this was, this was a lot, just try and get here. So the general requirement section, he had a lot of comments about. So, so, I mean, I, I have, I have both, I have both copies of documents, but it's hard, it's hard to even compare, because a lot of it was remove this section entirely, remove the section entirely. So now a section is going to get renumbered, and, and the table of contents is, is off, is, is out of whack. So it really is going to take some, some time just to sit. As, as whoever wants to work on, I'm, I'm happy to do that. But this is, this, I think, is beyond a, a regular meeting.
I, I would agree, Bill. I, I can make myself available, because I, myself, and I think Norman and you were the key principal players on the, on the last revision. And, and so it might make sense. I mean, I'll figure out a time when I can meet with you. And if Norman or somebody else wants to join us, that would be, that would be beneficial. But I, I agree with you, that just sitting down and going through it and making sure that the the changes are intelligible and that we can explain them to the, to the rest of the planning commission would be beneficial.
Okay. And it doesn't have, it doesn't have to be before our next meeting.
That's great. Wonderful.
I, yeah, I, I think it makes sense for me to join that. I hope others do. I must say that the copy I printed out with Kevin's comments did not have page numbers on it. So.
That's a separate, that's a separate document, Norman, I think. The, the one that Bill sent us did, I believe, or didn't, well, maybe it didn't.
Is this someone attached to the letter?
Yeah.
To Barbara?
All right, well.
One was the letter sent to Barbara, which we got from Bill last time.
Okay, but it had, I, it had the changes behind it.
Yes. The, the one, I, I, I'm not sure if Norman is referencing the one that we received for, as material prep for this meeting. I did not print that out. I'm looking at Andy's. It looks like it's a PDF. And if that's the one you're referencing, Norm, online, you're right. It does not have page numbers on the pages of the PDF. But as you scroll through it, the PDF indicates what page you're on.
Well, what I'm, what I'm referring to is what I was referring to Dana was the version dated 9/2024 with KB edits. And that's what Bill sent. And that, that did not have it. So I'm not altogether certain what else you're referring to, but we can not take up time with that tonight. We've got time to get together and get me up to speed, so to speak.
Okay. And Bill, I mean, putting page numbers, I mean, that's pretty, we're talking something pretty straightforward, right?
Yeah, I, I can, I should be able to do that. Yes, it should be.
It should be. It should be. It's not always, but yeah, it should be.
It isn't always.
Okay, so we will leave it to a, to Dana and Norm and Bill and whoever else is interested to work on this, either for our meeting on the 14th or the one.
I'm sure we didn't have to do it before the 14th, and that would be a wonderful.
Either for that or the one in December.
I would advocate one in December myself personally, but.
Okay, okay.
Dana, this, Dana, this will surprise you, but I agree.
Okay, Norman, it's got to be a, a star alignment then, as long as Bill says that's okay, that's what we do.
Yeah, so it'd be.
That will be the one on the.
December 5?
Yeah, December 5.
We don't have the calendar right in front of us for that month.
No, but the first is a Sunday, and the fifth would be that Thursday.
Okay. Two meetings from now.
Yep.
So we'll find some time in between to get together.
Thank you. Bill, anything else on this?
No, that's, it's, 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 his comments were very good and removed a lot of stuff, which I think we were questioning ourselves. But still leaves us with a lot to do. But we're, we're, we're gonna, we're, we got some more work to do, but I think it's going to be really good in the end.
Bill, I think it's just a question of digesting what's there and, and making reference to what we were calling into question on the original document and the, the things that we wanted. And then we can just share that so that people can feel comfortable taking action on our subdivision, so that, you know, we're not just adopting something without a, at least a rudimentary understanding of what we're.
I think the. I read.
Yeah.
I, I read through Kevin's letter with all his comments on it. And it was extensive. But the thing that stuck with my mind is how many things had to be deleted, because they were no longer applicable due to changes in the statute. And I think that's very important to be aware of, that there are wholesale changes over what we have met.
Norman, if you go back to the document that you and I and Bill put together, all of those questions were for legal references, and I think what he's saying is that those legal references are no longer applicable, because I know that I had done significant research on some of those citations, and I couldn't find them. So I think that what that means is that they no longer exist. So that's, in my mind, a good thing.
Oh, I agree.
An ordinance that references something that doesn't exist.
Yep. Kevin did a good job taking all that out, and I've gone through and taken all of that out. The, the, the document that you guys have that has the Kevin Brown edits, the table of contents does not, does not line up, there's section numbers which are wrong. You know, there's, there's going to be a lot of formatting, it's going to have to, there's going to be a lot of formatting I'll get to do. But removed all, all the stuff he says this has got to go, it went. Citation updates are all updated, but it's, it's those
That's great.
big, big chunks in section two and section four that we're going to have to work on.
That sounds good. Hey, Bill, can I make a request that Norman and I get a, a copy of the updated document that you sent out to us digitally?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I'll, I can have that tomorrow afternoon or Monday. No problem.
That's fine. No rush.
Were you talking, Dana, are you talking about an updated from the document that's headlined with KB edits?
No, I just want to print out.
Of that?
Print out of that document, yes.
Okay.
I looked at it online.
Okay, I, I have it. Okay.
You have it. So you don't need a copy, is what you're telling me?
No, I have, I printed it out, and it, and it did not have page numbers on it, and I said, what's going on here? So anyway.
I tell you what, Norman, if Bill can put the page numbers on, he can print it for both of us, and then you would have an easy reference. How's that?
That, that would help.
Okay.
Okay. Good. Thank you very much, Dana, Norm, and Bill. Don't forget to, to put out a notice about this meeting, because it will be a public meeting when you meet.
Yep.
So put together a small agenda, Bill, and just post that in the usual places.
Yep, no problem.
10-4, okay. Okay, thank you again, guys.
The, the select board, and this should maybe be a, maybe a small addendum to your, to your meeting agenda for tonight, is budget. The board is going to be meeting, December 10th is going to be their budget meeting to finalize everything. But just keep in mind, over the next few weeks, we're going to have, there's going to be a lot of committee meetings taking place for budget planning. So my availability is going to be hit or miss, so, but we can, but we can do that. As far as the planning commission budget is pretty good. The review of the subdivision ordinance has taken about 150% of your legal budget for the, the year. So it, it was extensive.
Well, it was like a couple of years' worth of work, though.
Yeah, no, it sure was.
It wasn't just 12 months of, of billing, really. We sent it to him, you know, like two years ago.
Did he bill it all at one time?
Yeah, it kind of came through as like his summary reviews and, and things like that. So we, we, it came in the last, the last bill cycle.
For the whole effort?
Yes.
So he didn't bill it monthly?
No, he had it for a long time before he actually was able to get it back to Bill, so.
Even by fiscal year.
Yeah. He does, really, he does project-based billing, not like timeline. So for, for this, for this kind of thing, it was billed as a project, not as like an ongoing thing. So that's, that's kind of what, where that happened.
Um, Bill, can you give us any guidance back to the budgeting? What the select board is thinking? Are they expecting people to come in with increased budgets? Are they expecting them to come in flat, or do they, are they asking us to cut back at all?
That topic has not come up. The, the directive from Mary was for committees to meet and discuss budgets. There was not a discussion about expectation of up, down, or flat.
So Bill, one more question, if I may. We have two meetings between now and December 10th. We have the 14th, 14th, and we have the 5th. Is that correct?
I think so. Sounds right.
Right. And they, and they want to have some type of recommendation by the 10th? Of what our budget should look like? Okay. So then I am going to make a recommendation that we at least put a preliminary discussion on our next agenda, the 14th. And then we can have any final discussion that we need on the, on the 5th. So that the, we can meet the select board's timeline for.
Yeah.
Many discussions.
For, for your group, it's, it's, I think it's a pretty easy discussion. And I don't really see the need to make any drastic changes to any of the lines. I think we're gonna be pretty, pretty consistent, so I think yours is gonna be pretty, probably the easiest.
And maybe we just need to do it next time and we'll be done.
Norm?
Is, is the select board concerned? Maybe they're not even aware with the apparent overrun on the, on the legal expenses. Um, will we need to explain that to them?
Well, it's not, it's not, we didn't go over budget, we went over a lot of items.
Okay.
Uh, which, which they don't like to see, but it happens. It happens a lot.
Yeah.
Or maybe not a lot.
Yeah, so Norm, they are, they are not aware because it just came in. It is over, but your line is not heavily funded to start with. So even going over by a hundred, by, by fifty percent, we're talking like a thousand dollars, it's not, we're not making a, a substantial deficit, so.
Either with like a twelve thousand dollar budget, Norm.
Right, I, I am not, I am not concerned about that at all.
Okay, well, good, thank you. I have some experience in billing. I have some experience in billing, so it caught my attention.
So Bill, uh, my request is the same that I usually have made for the last couple of years. Can we get, um, uh, actuals on the, uh, the, the final twenty twenty-three budget? And then, uh, where we are year-to-date on the twenty twenty-four budget, just for comparison purposes?
I, I can do that.
Okay. There is numbers that have been requested, I do not have, I do not have draft budget sheets yet.
Okay.
But that, we can get the budget to actuals.
I mean, the twenty twenty-two would be probably published in one of the, um, town reports, but the twenty twenty-three, uh, year-to-date would not be available unless we get that from someone.
Uh, it comes from Terry, it, it comes, there's draft budget sheets that go out when they're ready, but they're not, they haven't been done yet, so there's, there isn't the information to be able to send out yet.
Uh, so maybe my request is premature to ask us to do a look at that on the fourteenth. Or would it be ready by the fourteenth?
It should be available next week.
Right, and our numbers don't change very much.
Right, yeah, this is, this is not a complicated, I think, I think we're probably discussing it more now than we will for the actual budget discussion.
So I don't think we need, um, I think we've got our marching orders here, I don't think, think we need any, uh, motions.
Nope.
Here about the budget, okay. Let's move on. Um, so we've got Act one eighty-one, remember that is the, uh, amended Act two fifty.
Yep.
And the select board is, their guidance to us is, um, you know, go ahead and work your way down the list of criteria that would be needed for the most preferable status um, with Act two fifty. And don't be bothered by zoning right now. So, um, they said, why don't you start at the top and at the top, um, was having a village center. And the last time we met, um, I let you know that I had a meeting set up about that, so we had that meeting, um, and there, you know, we all know there are limited possibilities here, uh, for a village center. The only, probably the only possibility is this building um, and cemetery and maybe a couple of the commercial establishments west of here. Uh, it would only go down three or four more buil- buildings. So it's not, it's not a true village center, it's just on one side and, um, and also the whole, that whole program is sunsetting at the end of twenty twenty-five. So, you know, there's, there may not be a whole lot of benefits of going through that program. What may apply to us more is that there is other language in Act one eighty-one where and it's still being worked out and figured out by everyone around the state where a regional planning commission could in its mapping that it does for like future land use and that sort of stuff, it could create an area that is village center light or something like that, or would have some preference for, um, for redevelopment that might be on the historical side. That's all being, it's in there, people just don't know exactly what it would entail uh, in real life and that's being worked out in real time right now. So I'm thinking of going to the select board and saying, why don't we just wait for that and take that option? Unless you think, unless this group thinks we've got a village center here that we should go after. The incentives for a village center are, um, it's, it's, it's for historical buildings, commercial buildings, and there'd be some funding and grant um, opportunities and advantages to having it. I'm not sure if there's much work we'd be doing here that would be applicable in this building or any of the buildings here. Any thoughts?
Well, I have a question. Uh, when I, when I went through it, my understanding was that there, there are references that, that requirements are for a, a plan uh, that includes, uh, it includes specific, um, directions that the, or that the community is taking toward something, toward some physical construction, for want of a better term, and that, that, that each, if you, if you expect, if you want designation, I think that's a term that's used. Uh, you need a plan that seems to be detailed and have plans specifically for the future.
Right.
And I wonder if we're, if, if we meet that.
Right, we don't, using the straight face test, we really don't. So there may be some other opportunities to have some sort of a district in town that would meet the criteria of Act one eighty-one, might be something a little bit different than a village center.
Is that what the, well, uh, regional planning commission is looking at?
That would, yeah, that would come from the, it would be a regional kind of mapping effort. Because the, the regional planning commissions have a much larger role, period, because of one eighty-one. They do some of the stuff already, but it's gonna be much.
So they could, they could make recommendations to the municipalities, is that what you're saying?
They, they, uh, by working with municipalities, they will come up with new mapping. That, that will come up with areas that, it will come up with all kinds of things, you know, things that should be conserved, things that or, or areas that could be developed. And.
Would that be in lieu of then this, uh, town center designation?
Right.
Okay. Well, my recommendation would be that if that's already in the works and that would serve the same purpose, then.
It's not in the works per se, everyone's still trying to decipher the legislation and, you know, what is allowed and who will do it and all that kind of stuff. But there does seem to be a window for towns like ours and towns that don't make the December twenty twenty-five sunset date to still be included in some of these districts that will have growth potential or, or otherwise.
I mean, I thi- I think that, uh, given the short timeline uh, for the village center designation and the sunsetting of the program, it, it would be an exercise in futility for us to try to do that before December of twenty twenty-five.
And there's that factor too.
So, I mean, for me, I mean, I'm happy to designate, to, to, to dedicate, uh, time to a project if it's worthwhile, but this one seems like it's, it's, it's too short and wouldn't benefit us significantly. So my personal preference would be to go the route of the, uh, uh, regional planning commission focus, I don't know what other people think, but that would be mine. Like, gives us more time and we don't have to feel like we're under, under the gun and feeling pressure to do one more thing.
Mm-hmm.
So one, one of the things you said, I, I felt in the background that there may be more than one municipality at, in the plan that is effectively a center, one of these designated centers. For instance, if Rutland and West, uh, Rutland Town and West Rutland together, is that something that is you meant to say or did I just read that into?
Well, I, I think, um, in, in the next few years, there'll be a, a few more towns, Fairhaven and Brandon going for city status. There may be a few other towns that will go for planned growth areas that may or may not include Rutland Town. So, so the, the new act kinda opens up these, these possibilities for, uh, planning. Um, I think the benefits of those will not be like they are right now where there are grants and funds available. Um, the opportunities will be more along the lines of allowing for more housing and finding those areas for housing and, and the amenities that will be needed to go with that. Think I'm explaining that. So I don't think there's anything we need to do right now if everyone kinda concurs with that. Just let the one eighty-one play out, there, there is, um, I'll be going to a training in mid-November about this and the, we'll hopefully get some more answers, um, about this whole process of like what the regional planning commissions can do. And I can report back after that.
Sounds good.
Okay. Okay, um, I was going to go, yeah, into the river corridor ordinance, we've got a lot of stuff on our plates. So why don't we kind of, um, do this as an assignment? Um, unless you wanna do it right now, what I was gonna ask is like, what are your questions with this ordinance? That I can take to DEC and get answers to and maybe just push this along. So, um, hands for doing it now? Anyone? Hands for making it homework?
Uh, I'd like a focus if we're gonna do it for budget tasks. We're talking about those, right?
Yeah.
And the document on.
I mean, we, we've been over it, we've been over it a couple of times, we've been over the concepts of river corridors, I think wha- wha- what I've been interpreting is from this group is like, oh, we don't, you know, we've never done this part before, how does this work and all that kinda stuff, so I wanted us to highlight those areas.
My recollection, Barbara, was that we were going to do, identify certain types of questions, but then invite, um, the presenter back to do a final review.
Well, yes, yes, but the presenter does a lot of evening meetings, I'm trying to make his job a little bit easier since he's been, he's been before us twice before.
Okay.
And it's not his problem that, you know, th- this has been stretched out on our, on our part. But we can get him back, um, maybe, but I thought a first step would be just send him some questions. Yeah, Norm?
I think it's not, I think we should set a more specific time down the line to do that, I've looked over once or twice, I still have trouble following some of it. I think, I don't know if anybody else does, but, you know, we've got the subdivision regulations to deal with. I think we ought to get the, and they are much more relevant to our day-to-day activities, so I think we ought to prioritize what we really concentrate on, work on those. Unless there's some timeline relative to the flood hazard bylaws and river quarter bylaws. I think we ought to step back.
Yeah, there, there would, yeah, there's no, there's no deadline for this, it, it is part of that list of criteria for Act one eighty-one. So we don't wanna keep pushing it off. But I think, um, yeah, maybe, um, hope if we can get done with the subdivision ordinance in early twenty twenty-five, we get into this, and I, I think, I think we need to answer all of our questions about the ordinance before we do any public meetings.
Yes.
We need to know, especially since we don't do this every, the town doesn't do this.
Right, so.
Zoning light.
Uh, I've, I've identified, um, I went through and once again, I didn't read every single word, but I went through and identified uh, certain topics that I think need attention or at least our attention if we're going to address it, and maybe that will generate questions. Uh, page three, the developmental review. Um, page six, uh, lands to which the bylaws apply.
Um.
Hold on, Dana.
That's, that's a mapping thing.
It, yeah, I'm just telling you what I, what I have listed as my, uh, areas of, um, interest focus, uh, need to address. Page seven, developmental requirements. Page nine and eleven, pages nine and eleven, the standards. Uh, page twelve, which goes back to our crossover with, um, uh, the subdivision, uh, ordinance, and that's an administrative officer. So we're having a question about, uh, administrative officer for, um, subdivision uh, ordinances, we should have that conversation with respect to the, um, for the river quarter bylaw, whatever we call it, ordinance, what we're calling it. And then, uh, pages fifteen, administrative responsibilities, that's an offshoot of page twelve, which is the administrative officer. And then, um, we can spend some time, if we so choose, on the definitions, the definitions are probably three or four pages in length. Uh, that's just a, 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 really, are those definitions intelligible, are they, um, are they clear? So, that's my contribution. What we do with that is up to the rest of the body.
Of course, there's another whole set of, of a, a stand-up or, or a model if the town has zoning, so if we switch over to zoning. Um, we'll probably need to change some of this, so it's probably not, it's probably good that we're not trying to get this one done first. Not that we would wait until zoning, but I'm just saying.
Yep.
This, this one, it was created for a town without zoning.
Yep.
Hey, Norm?
The one thing that strangely jumped off the page to me was having the definitions at the back of the ordinance, not at the that just.
Yep.
Okay. That's a simple formatting thing.
Yes, but it's, it's important, cause at least you know where to go and.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay. Hey, Bill, are you still online?
Yes, I am.
How are you feeling about, about this, this, um, model by law?
Fantastic. Um, you know, actually, my, my, my to-do list was empty, so I needed something else to put on it. Um, no, uh, I think, um, I, I think getting through subdivision first is we are well underway with that, and now that we have it back, we have like, we can kind of renew our, our work on it, so. And, and like to Dana's point, there's gonna be some, there's gonna, there's gonna be some overlap for some responsibility, so that may be helpful too, so. Um, I think if we maybe just keep, keep the topic alive, but not put a lot of focus on it. Uh, and Norm, yes, we can move the definitions from the end to the beginning, no problem, happy pace.
Thank you.
I agree with, um,
I agree with, um, with Bill that, that makes sense to kind of finish the edits to the subdivision and things we have on, on the table right now and then focus on River Corridor afterward.
Yeah, and, and glad you spoke up, Mary Beth, because you, you have some experience with these bylaws, don't you?
Oh, with River Corridor, um, using them, yeah, in the consulting, um, in the consulting field, although I don't, I think we talked to Kyle about this, but I don't think there's any towns, or not very many, but, um, where it's not part of zoning. So I think it's pretty rare to have a River Corridor ordinance as a standalone, just because, um, I think the, the work involved in reviewing everything, um, I think is usually done by a town administrator or zoning administrator.
Like person.
Right, yeah. Um, not that we couldn't do it, but, um, yeah, I think, um, seeing how that would fit with everything else that we're doing in the other ordinances, it makes sense.
How, uh, how about, I know Mount Holly just, just passed this. No zoning, and they went with this, this model. Um, do we want maybe to get the planning, uh, chair, planning commission chair to speak to us? We're talking after the subdivision ordinance, so sometime this winter?
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah.
Sure.
So we're talking, we're talking about the River Corridor ordinance, right?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. And hopefully, I mean, everybody has a copy of it. Hopefully you'll keep these and just take a look at them every once in a while. And, um, especially as, as we're doing the subdivision ordinance. See if there is any crosswalking between the two that is needed. I see you, Norm. Go ahead.
Well, I'm just, you know, wrap up the discussion on this and then I want to just, some, some conversation has puzzled me. Not just in general. So finish this. If they're finished, then I'll raise my question. I mean, if you're finished with the flood hazard, then I'll.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I'm just puzzled by one thing. Rutland, the, the, the last couple of meetings has been considerable mention of a zoning ordinance. And what, and I'm surprised by that. Um, historically, uh, Rutland Town has not, it, it's been poisoned, in a sense. Um, and I'm just wondering, is there now consideration by the select board or anybody else proposing that we really look at a zoning ordinance? Obviously, we can't do it in the next several months, but just the mention of it surprises me.
Well, yeah, you've missed a couple of meetings. You might have missed some of these conversations about Act 181. And so the town is, the select board is still thinking it wants to go for the optimal tier in that Act 181, which would negate the need for much Act 250 review. Okay? But you have to have all of these things in place. A River Corridor bylaw is one of them. Um, a village center is another one. Um, and zoning is on that list as well.
Okay.
So the, the, the select board is very aware that it's on that list. Yeah, I've, I've, I've told them it's there. We had a motion meeting or two ago to go to them and say, you realize this is on the list, um, you know, what are your priorities here? And they said to leave that zoning to last and to see what we can do with the rest of the list for criteria.
Thank you.
I don't know if you've, if you've had a chance to look at the, the act, Norm.
Not in.
Or the handouts, the handouts we've had.
I'm not, not very well, or not very deeply. I'm not even sure I have the act date 181 out, handout. But if there is one, I'll speak to Bill about getting it. You, you've answered my question. We don't need to take any more time.
Okay. So, uh, I think we're still talking about River Corridor. Um, so, yeah, we'll do something this winter with that and maybe see if, uh, Mount Holly will speak to us.
We don't need any action about that, right? You'll just talk to the chair of the Mount Holly.
Yeah.
Yep. That sounds like a plan.
Okay. Um. I want to hear other people's announcements. Uh, the, the river, the pocket park. Um, there are a couple of grants open right now, uh, and, uh, brought those to the attention of the select board. They're particularly interested in one, which, um, is the recreational trails, um, program. And that can be for up to $50,000 and a 20% match. Um, and there's not too many strings attached to that, except, um, there, it has to go through a pre-application process, which is early, is due early December. And then, um, if you get, if you make it through that process, you, you do a full-on application. Uh, so the select board would like us to put together, uh, this application, so I'll, I'll work on that. Um, it includes a work plan, you know, a budget, and there's something brand new. The recreation project climate resilience risk form, uh, which looks like it mostly talks about what might be hazards um, in, in that area, in that parcel, um, that would be affected by climate resilience. I haven't really looked at this too, too closely yet. Um, but I'm, I'm more than willing to work on this application. Mary Beth, can I run by some things with you as I work through this?
Sure, yeah.
You have some time? That'd be great.
Yeah.
What are they, um, identifying as work plan components?
Um, briefly describe, um, the work component and specific location of the trail. What tasks are included that you want to be covered, anticipated results, anticipated start date, anticipated end date.
Yep.
And any complimentary work outside this project request. Um, same questions for that.
Yes. That, that gives me an idea. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, so that's, that's that. Um, was there anything, the select board meeting, uh, this week uh, about the transfer from Green Mountain Power, Bill?
The board had an executive session discussion about a land transaction, and that was all that was discussed in open meeting.
So, uh, you think the discussions are underway?
I wasn't a part of it, so I can't say that, that was the topic. And they came out and had no action. So I don't know if it's just, if it was just an update. I'm, I'm really not sure.
But that's still, I mean, I think we're going to have a nice deal.
Yep.
Coming out of this.
And you're going to meet with, uh, or have you already done that? You and Mary are going to, uh, meet to work out some details, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, that's an ongoing.
That hasn't happened, though, has it?
It has happened. It's an ongoing thing.
It, you're meeting regularly? Great.
Hmm, more or less.
Meeting periodically. Okay.
Um, so a couple meetings ago at the select board, there was some initial discussions about setting up or establishing a recreation director. Um, and Bill, is that, is that on the fast track for like the next budget? I couldn't quite get a grasp on that.
That topic is going to be discussed at the REC committee budget discussions. Um, there was a request, and that's where it's going to go to, is the REC committee.
Okay.
So they're talking, they're going to talk about it, but it wasn't, it wasn't really a, a full board, it wasn't ready for a full board discussion. It was ready for the, the committee members to talk about it.
Yeah, and, and, you know, it's, Mike Rowe made the proposal that he be the new REC director. That would, that the position be created. And it would be full-time, right, Bill?
Yep. Oh, yes. It would be a salaried position. So, yes, it would be a, a, so we, we would have a, a full-time REC director and, um, his intention would be to retire as a, as a school teacher and then take over in that role.
And the thinking is that programs for seniors would fill up some of his time.
It sure will.
I'm wondering, Mary Beth, if we should try to put the conservation commission in, under REC now?
Um, I believe I would talk to them, but, um, I don't know, maybe.
So that's that.
Yep.
I think it'd be great to have a, um, REC director. One of the things that, whether we have a conservation commission or not, just a trail plan for Rutland Town. Um, now that the Valmont Trail has a master plan and we know that it's going through Rutland, uh.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's just so many things you could do with a conservation commission.
Right, yes. So I think, um, yeah, and Mike is very supportive of trails and has done great, great work there. And, yeah, so I think it'd be great to have a conservation commission and, um, would work well with recreation too.
Yeah, I mean, when I first heard this, I mean, I, I'm still just wondering where the full-time work is. But, um, hopefully this will all be fleshed out with the budgeting.
That's not our task, so.
But we're citizens of the town.
Sure.
We're taxpayers.
Indeed. But it, it's not necessarily something that the planning commission has.
No, we don't have any authority. No, no. So, okay. Uh, any other announcements? Jim Hall is retiring at the end of the calendar year. And so, um, I don't know if the, the position, you know, we'll be looking for another alternate. I don't know if that's opened up or not yet, Bill?
Oh, it is, yes. The advertisements have, I've posted them in a couple places, uh, for that, for interested candidates to reach out. Uh, and I haven't heard from anybody as of yet.
No issues from Jim, just, um, he felt like he'd come to the end of the line of his public service for the town. And was hoping to step back.
But we should do some recognition at our last meeting, perhaps.
I'm not sure. That's the fifth, the 26th. Are we going to have a meeting on the 26th? We're going to skip that meeting.
I think we'll probably skip it.
So that would be the fifth.
Skip it. You should, you should do something to recognize him.
That should happen on the 5th, just getting a plan.
Oh, why? Okay.
Okay, let's set up a party committee.
But we'll skip the 26th and have the, um, restart our calendar on the first Thursday.
Which is what we usually do. We, we go into the first week of January.
Right. But we usually just decide that that's what we're going to do. Okey-dokey.
Okay, Bill, um, you and I will be of the December 5th Jim Hall Committee.
Outstanding.
You want to be a standing committee?
We'll, we'll use, we'll use the, we'll use the rest of the fiscal year budget to, to throw a party.
All right. Okay. Anything else? We've moved to the minutes of October 3rd.
To approve. Second.
Thank you. Any suggested changes?
Not for me.
Norm's still going through it.
I had a conversation the other day, so I think we're good.
Wasn't here either.
Oh, you weren't here?
No, Norm wasn't.
Oh, Norm wasn't. Yeah, right.
I, I had.
You're all set, right, Norm? You're all set. You don't have any issues with the minutes, right?
Right. I mean, my questions, I had some questions and Dana, I, Dana cleared it all out for me, so.
There we go.
Okay. And, and so no typos, Norm?
Nope.
Nope, we're good.
Okay. All some favor approving the minutes. As prepared by Bill. Sweet. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Tell me else to.
Second.
Yeah, there we go.
Okay. We're adjourned. Thank you.